All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Before we stand for the pledge, we have students come in to lead the pledge for us each board meeting. Tonight, we have Apollo Burl. He is a second grade student at Otis in Mrs. Vanderveen's class. His parents are Apollo Burl and Rosemary Hernandez. So if we all stand for the pledge, Apollo's gonna lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming in. All right, thank you, Mr. Burl. Fine job doing the pledge tonight, so. The, if I could have roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, here. Ms. Nally.
Here.
Oh, my gosh. Ms. Lehman?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Nally?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on, from January 13th, 2025, please?
Almost.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to legislative report.
The Ohio School Board Association has started for the Legislative Liaison, a monthly Zoom meeting, and that happened today at noon. And they covered a lot. I tried to write down and think, you know, what would be pertinent to us this evening, and I just narrowed it down to a couple things. One, the discussion talked about the 136 General Assembly, and they emphasized that this was going to be a year of dealing with property tax, and that's going to be their main topic to work on this year. With regards to fair school funding, they emphasized a couple things. One was that the contrary to kind of what we had been hearing, that the Speaker of the House, and I know I reported, and we've, you know, kind of read a few places where the Speaker of the House has been very anti public schools and funding and for the fair school funding. He came out and kind of reversed that a little bit now, and I think it was largely because what I understand from the meeting today was that his caucus spoke to him and kind of shared that that's not necessarily where they're coming from and their constituents. So I thought that was a positive thing, and I think it goes to kind of that power of us as board members and community, working with our legislators. And I know as Legislative Liaison, I mentioned to Mr. Price that one of the things I want to work on this year is a better format for me to represent us with our legislators. I have not, in my first year of doing this, that wasn't something I feel like I did as well as, you know, we can do. And the other thing that, they talked about a number of different bills. The one that kind of caught my ear was, they talked about the mathematics improvement and intervention programs that that's kind of, it's one of the Senate bills, and that's something that they want to work on this coming year, and seems to be a priority with the Senate, but they're just starting to pull together all their legislation, so we can kind of see where that goes. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thanks, sir. No walk-on items tonight? Okay, moving on to the hearing of the public, if anyone would like to address the board, they can come up to the podium. All right, moving on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Good evening, board members. I have just a couple of things this evening that I just wanted to point out. Our latest edition of our district-wide newsletter has been sent out to all of our community members and our families into the homes, so I hope that everyone who would like to have received this did, and if somebody from the community did not receive this, they will stop at the district office located at 500 West State Street. We do have some extra copies, and we'd be happy to share that. There's really good information that represents each and every one of our buildings in the district, as well as some district highlights, and some really good information. So I hope every, all of you have had a chance to receive that as well. I did just want to make a note for, for you board members, as well as for our community. We will be sending out a special meeting notice as well, but we will have a change of location from our previous notification. So we have, and it's just simply a change in location, that there will be two dates on February 10th and March 24th, because we will be celebrating our stellar students. Those two meeting dates will be changed from this location here at Fremont Middle School to the Performing Arts Center at Ross High School. And that's a change of dates from our, what we first put out, so we'll make sure and get notification out to the public on that, so that you have all of that. Since we met last, we have had a couple of committee meetings. You should have received those meeting minutes, and Ms. Lehman, if you would like to share any details, any highlights from our Health and Wellness Committee?
I sure will.
Thank you.
All right. Some of the things we went over was a self-funded account. It dropped quite a bit from before. It was due to the end of the year, and employees using the insurance and finishing off their deductibles for the year. Our new cost savings program has been implemented. It will save employees and the district money, which is always a good thing. Employees can now access information at home using the cave. If you guys aren't, well, they should be familiar with the cave. It's a new app that they're using for this. A new health and wellness blog was created, along with links to the district's different providers. And then the committee will be meeting again on March 13th.
Fabulous, thank you. We also, our policy committee met via email. There was a very limited agenda. Mr. Price, would you like to?
That was an easy one.
Really easy.
Right, it was just one policy that we looked at for, that involved executive sessions for board, for school board, so it was really disverbiage in the law. So that was all that it was for policy, and that was it.
Fabulous, thank you. As you know, we have been reviewing since October our strategic plan, our current strategic plan. We are in year three of our current strategic plan for the district, and within that, we have our final presentation today to just give, share a little bit of information about our core component of community. So with us this evening, from the district level, we have Mrs. Susan King, who is our Director of Human Resources and Community Relations. We have Mrs. Erin Parker, who is the principal here at the Fremont Middle School, and Mr. Chris Ward, who is our principal at Atkinson Elementary, and the three of them are going to share some information with you, as well as with our community at home.
Good evening. I would like to start out, there is a presentation on the board behind you, if you can see that, or if you have it at your seat. The strategic plan started in 2022, and like Mrs. Hurt mentioned, it's running through 2025. Our vision statement that we've been working on is to develop individuals who thrive as they find their place in their local and global community. And our mission is, we are committed to a culture of collaborative achievement, creating high-performing individuals engaging successfully in a modern world. In order to accomplish those things, we break it down into goals, which one of our goals is to form reciprocal partnerships with community stakeholders, promote district pride. And then we had three action steps underneath that. And I'm not going to read those right now, because we will go through those one by one with each of our presentations that we are doing. When I was thinking about the presentation, I had to keep going back in time before I could come forward. And I figured since most of you were not on the board at the time of the creation of this strategic plan, I would kind of take you back to 2018 through 2021. And in that strategic plan, under community, we, our first action step was to continue partnerships with collaborative agencies and establish a process to align community resources. During that time, we created and shared a community partner chart, and we noticed that we rely on many of the same partners, from building to building and to the district. Our other action step was to make real-life connections by creating two-way communications with business community partners. And at the end of that '21, before we went to '22, we kind of noticed that our community partners were, our community partners are mostly one-way, that the communication between us and them. So that kind of led to the creation of these action steps for our new strategic plan that we have been working on for the last three years of promoting positive student activities in the community, to provide access to meaningful opportunities that improve district family partnerships, and to connect with diverse stakeholders to promote positive relationships. And to break that down a little bit further, if we move forward. The very first one, promote positive student activities in the community. If you follow us on Facebook or read our newsletters, either from the building level or the district level, you'll see many activities that students have been involved with. One of the ones is that leadership volunteered to write leaves at the Hayes Center. And here we have Otis and their Walk to School Day, where they got the parents involved. Many of the parent, or many of the students, I should say, at Otis are bus riders, and they don't get the chance to walk. So they meet down at Alliance Church. They have a little bit of breakfast, and then they get to walk from Alliance Church down Brush Street to Otis, and it's almost like a parade, if you've ever seen it, which is quite nice. We get lots of family members that are involved. In this photo, we have some students that made some Christmas cards and give them to the senior, or to the senior citizens at the various homes. This goes all the way from high school down to the elementary level, providing Christmas cards, placemats, things like that, to the different senior citizen homes across Fremont. Of course, we have our Coffee with Giants, where our students help people with their technology, which seems to be a hit, because that's always a tough thing for some of our people that don't use technology as much, if they get a device maybe at Christmas or sometime during the school year. These happen once a month. This is put on by leadership. Here we had our Snowball Dance at Krogan, and we're inviting parents into the school. They get to hang out with their child, and there's a dance going on. There are different activities. This was a breakfast for our families. It was during Christmas time. Santa Claus happened to attend that day. The next couple, well, the first one, I'm sorry, went a little fast there. The first one was Veterans Day, and we have programs at the various levels, and we also honored our vets here at the board meeting. The next one was Bonnie Arguelas and Officer Ovira, and they were both awarded with the Estrella Award, and this is for being a guiding light in the Latino community. And that was in the fall. This was another one that was for Veterans Day. It was one of the many celebrations that we had across the district where veterans were invited in and honored. And this one was Grandparents' Day, which is also a big hit. They come in for breakfast or lunch or to do some activities with their students. This is just a few of the activities that were going on. We also had things like Key Club baking cookies for dinners to give away at the Panafix, our Bloodmobile. Link volunteered at the soup kitchen, so many activities going on constantly. It seems to be a little bit easier for our higher levels and giving that back to the community, but our elementaries do give back to the community also. I know that Mr. Ward will hit a little bit on that. Our next goal was to provide access to meaningful opportunities that improve district partnerships and family partnerships, district family partnerships. Some of the things that the district level, we looked at was we revamped the look and format of the district newsletter. Mrs. Hurt just showed you the district newsletter, so I won't click the link that will take us there. It is also on the district website. I put up their internal communication, because in order to have good district family partnerships, we have to have the internal communication going on, and I do want to show you this very quickly. The cave was created this year. We have always had our internal access that we could have for staff members, but they were never able to access us at home. Recently, Corey worked on the cave and came up with this concept where we could go in. He didn't like our name, but we liked our name. We had it named, those little giants, where do they keep all of their valuable stuff? So that was a little side note there. I'm sure he'll appreciate that I shared that. But staff members can go to the cave. It's also known as the Knowledge Based On here. They can log in from home or at work, just using their Google login. And once they get there, they come to the staff landing page, and since Ms. Lehman talked about it in her minutes for Health and Wellness, I am going to click on that one. And here is our health blog that is available for staff members to go in. It's a running record of all of the announcements that were sent out throughout the year. And then there are, up here in the corner, the contacts, extra info, wellness opportunities, the monthly wellness tips that are being sent out, so that they have one easy place to access them all, and I believe if I go to the contacts, you'll see also the various companies that we deal with that gives staff access at home. I know that we had brought in the online services a few years ago for medical. It was just a little bit prior to 2020, so it did come in handy then, where you could visit the doctor's office online, and it was through the Cleveland Clinic. And a lot of people thought it was wonderful. They liked using it, but if they didn't save that link someplace, then they were at home, or they were, I had somebody driving over one of the brakes to family members, and they had a child in the car. Their child was sick, so they called me, said, "Do you have that link? Can you share it with me?" We got them the link, and they were able to access it. If we would have had this going at the time, they would have been able to access it through here. So just things, again, to make their lives a little bit easier. Going back to the strategic plan, we've also been utilizing social media. When I first started, I believe we had about 300 followers on our Facebook page. And my first goal was to get us to 500, and then to get us to 1,000. When I checked today, we have 7,300 followers. So we have grown quite a bit in the last few years. We also use YouTube. We have, usually for board meetings and other things that we post, we have an average of about 100 views. Our graduation video that was on YouTube, got almost 700 views. And there was a YouTube on there about the summer meals that were coming, and Jessica Michael, who heads up Child Nutrition, was on there, and that had about 400 views. We've just recently added in LinkedIn. We've been on there, but we're becoming a little bit more active. Our new website for employment opportunities also goes to LinkedIn, so that's why we are getting really up and running. So new goals will be set to really get that off the ground. Some things that we've been working on across the district too, for that family district, are Title One Nights. All of our buildings have one. There was an additional spring conference added in in February for the elementaries, and student-led conferences, big hits where students actually lead the parent-teacher conference and talk about things that they do well, things that they could improve. Getting that self-reflection that we talk about is, you know, part of those growing skills. So that's gone extremely well also. Here is the new district website. One of the hardest things that all of us have to face sometimes is criticism over the things that we work on, and one of the things that has come to light in my world is our application system. Our application is long, it's lengthy. People who are applying for some jobs, why do they have to fill out the part about, you know, their college or their student teaching experience, or all of that is in there, and then if they don't follow through and get it all, they don't get their application submitted. And then we don't look at them when we're looking at jobs, because we look at submitted applications, and so it causes issues. So this has been a big undertaking in trying to get a hold of some of those diverse stakeholders, in this case, potential employees. We have changed up our website and our program that we are using. We've moved over to Red Rover, and we have, when you first come to the webpage, it has the short video that we have that is on there. Whoops. And if I can get myself there without changing the next video. It looks just like this, like the picture that I showed you, so they can click on the short video. They can click just to connect with us and let us know that they're kind of following us to see what jobs are becoming posted. And if they want to browse our jobs, they just come down. Before, it was a little screen, and you had to decide, was it an administrative position, a classified position? Here now, you can see exactly what the jobs are. You can apply for them with an easy click, and you just put in your email. You don't have to remember a password, because what it will do is, it will send you something on your phone each time you go to login or in your email, whatever you prefer, and give you that easy link to log right in. We have a lot of people who start an application, don't remember their password, which we were users of the other application that we were using, were not privy to that. So then they had to go through and be reset. So this just takes out some of those barriers that we had going. They can easily apply for the job. The applications have all been changed up so that they kind of correspond with the different types of jobs that they're applying for. So the more lengthy the application is, goes to like if it's administrative job. They have to fill out their previous experience and their college experience and their degrees, those types of things. For teachers, they have most of those things, excuse me. And then it goes from there for the different positions that they are applying for, going down to the subpositions. It's kind of their basic information that we're asking for. And I have found that, just since we've opened this site and implemented it since January, we are getting a ton of applications, so it proves to be working so far. So we're very excited about that. Next, we will go to Atkinson. And Mr. Ward.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm excited to talk about this, this with community. This has been something that we value at Atkinson, and that's kind of why I started off with a couple pictures from my staff and students, because we really, like I said, value the piece of community. With staff, that was my goal when I set apart here 12 years ago, when I took this job. I knew I wanted to establish a strong community slash culture, if you call it, with my staff, and I felt like I could not explore that or extend that beyond into the classroom or even to the community, if I couldn't do that with my staff to begin with. I think my staff would attest to that, that we have a strong community. They're willing to do whatever for my, for myself and for the building and for the students. And then that trickles over into the students. So that's just a picture of, you know, one of the many things that we do as a staff. That's them all doing some type of theme, you know, each year where they dress up for the students, you know, this last year was a Disney theme. So everybody was a character from a Disney movie. I, myself, and Mr. Kern were up. If you've seen the movie Up, I was the old man, and he was the young little Boy Scout guy. He needed a little red balloon, though. He didn't have that. With the students off to the right, that's the Men with Manors program. I started that 10 years ago. We've extended that over even to Otis, and Krogan has that. Actually, Fostoria has it now. I did a little presentation over there for them, so that's a piece of that, like I said, we hold pretty dear to us as building that community within the staff and the students. Just some continued things with that. There's more pictures of the staff there, but the students in the middle there, that's our Fall Campout with the community. That is just some things that we do, get some outside That is just some things that we do, get some outside donations with that. But also the students are taking part in some reading activities throughout the day. And they're just having some, doing some smores, doing some outside activities that they normally wouldn't do. A lot of our students don't get to do some of those things. They haven't camped before, they'd never made a s'more. So we always make sure that they get to experience some things like that. And off to the far right there is our Reading Buddies Program with that community. It's a piece of just showing other students on how to be a role model. And then we practice that once a month with our students of older students with the younger students and how to be a good reader. So that first goal there was promoting positive students' activities in the community. These are just some of the things that I highlighted with the clubs. We have Make a Difference Club, State Patrol, Video Announcements, The Men with Manners. And then our Make a Difference Club, that's what in the Mad Club, they're not mad, but it's Make a Difference Club. But they provide lots of things, so I just tried to highlight a few things. The top right picture up there is one of the local coffee shops in town. Actually, it was, I think it was On Point Wellness too. They made some pictures and motivational sayings on the coffee sleeves for the customers that came in from our students. So that was one of the things that they do. A lot of, a couple of the nursing homes here in town, we make table mats. They do Christmas ornaments, all kinds of things for them. And we try to bring them into as well and have them involved with some of our things. We have a parade around in the fall and we've invited them over the last three years to come and watch our parade. They typically will bus them over. They weren't unable to do that this year because their vehicle was actually broken down. So, but we try to, you know, reciprocate that as well with that. And like I said, the Men with Manners Program, we always do a community cleanup. We always clean up the schools, but then we also clean up some of the houses in the neighborhood. You know, I get some parents or some families around the neighborhood that will allow us to clean up their yards, you know, rake some leaves, pick up sticks, whatever it is. So our students get to take part in that as well. The bottom right corner picture there was also some Make a Difference Club students actually recognizing our lunch staff for a designated week. You know, was recognition for our lunch and cafeteria workers. So they were giving back to our cafeteria workers as well. The second goal, providing access to meaningful opportunities that improve district family partnerships. Just some things that I highlighted there that we connect with eight to 10 local agencies, organizations a year to build relationships with our school, including these are just, I didn't even list all of them, but yeah, Vanguard, Fremont Fire Department, Fremont Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, our Sandusky County Recycling Center, the Health Department, a lot of Fremont City personnel that we do some items with. The Arbor Foundation, FFA, Ross Leadership, Ross Link, Reach, Coannis Rotary. They come in and do some readings. We have all kinds of connections with that. The bottom left picture there is our FFA students coming in and doing a presentation to our students. And they've also helped us with a program we did a couple of years ago, a reading program that involved the, some farm animals and the Charlotte's Web. So they brought a bunch of animals over and actually penned them up. And the students were able to do, you know, and see some animals that they typically wouldn't see. So that was pretty neat. And then there's their visit, a second grade visit to kindergarten also goes to the fire department. They also come in and out of the buildings frequently with lots of different programs, with the ICE Safety Program. And they're there, they're quite often. Third picture over there to the right is our Sheriff's Department. Our third grade students always read a story involving a canine. And so they always, when they, after they get in reading that, they bring in the sheriff with his canine unit and help with that. And the far right is our Vanguard, the Ames Bus. We try to utilize that, if you're not familiar with that. That is an amazing program that Vanguard has. They will bring a technology bus right to the schools. And they offer a lot of like STEM programs and science programs that our students are able to utilize that they, we don't have access to, but they do. And they do an amazing job with the presentation part of that. These are just continued pictures, you know, bringing in some veterans that we have that spoke to some of our students. The middle picture there is us just having some like our spelling bee and even sometimes talent show. We bring in various guest speakers. That's Cody Bischoff from the rec. I think we even used Mr. Detweiler. We used one of the staff members from Vanguard as well. And then the left picture there was just Arbor Day that we can, participated in that. They planted a tree and, you know, asked some of the schools to participate in that. Then the final goal there was connecting with diverse stakeholders. That one, that has probably been our biggest goal is to how much more can we involve the community? And that started going on, well, three years ago now with our parking lot party. We used to do Ohio State and Michigan Dinner. Some of you guys might remember that. Now the makeup of our buildings, it's a little bit different. So squeezing that many people in for that is a little difficult. So we tried to come up with something different and that was a parking lot party. And the last two years, it has grown more with outside resources. But each year we've averaged well over 350 people. So we kind of lost count and we've had, we have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Burchard Library, the Y, the rec. We have all kinds of local agencies there that they can offer some of their services to and to present to families. Fremont Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, Fremont PD. And with that is anywhere from eight to 10 local food vendors that have their food trucks. So it has gone very well. We did that two years in a row, everybody came back. We actually added two or three more trucks. And it is getting bigger and bigger each year. So we're really excited for that. And I know like Shari Mullins and even Cody Bischoff said, they've tried to have multiple, you know, venues and programs. And they said, I don't know how you guys do that. Because they said, we can get 100, 150 people sometimes, but we can't get anywhere the magnitude. I said, I'm not sure if it's, I think it's the food, you know, that draws people in. That's fine with us, but there's a big variety. So come May, we'll be doing that again. The second picture there from the left over there is a couple of staff. It's just our McTeacher Night. We try to involve some of the local businesses. We do a Chipotle Night, McTeacher Night. So we're at McDonald's. We actually had a local author too, from Slovenia that was there. They got to read to the kids and sign some books. And then the third picture there right behind Mr. Price there is Career Day, where we got to, we started doing that last year. We hadn't done that for quite a long time and just involved our fourth and fifth grade students to see some careers with plumbing and businesses. And actually, Mr. Price was able there to strut his stuff down the red carpet too, because we made them all walk down a red carpet. So he was one of our entrepreneurs and local businesses and that was able to present to the kids. Crown Battery and we had motion controls. So we had a good variety in nurse. So a little bit of everything for them. And then the very far right is our Mayor Sanchez. He came in and talked to the first grade students about voting. And they actually did a mock election with the students on how that actually works. And he did a really, really good job of pulling students up in front and explaining them exactly how an election works in the campaign piece of it, and how to persuade people and why they would choose one side or the other. And then the very far left, the first picture was just our food program that we run a backpack program through a local church. We have several churches that connect to us. But that is from the Templow Hennessy Rett, which is right down on Collingwood. Pastor Castro started that program this year. We planned it last year. It goes basically every other week, so twice a month. They provide food to, starting with about 15 families. I know Krogan does something similar through Victory Church, but they're very, very generous with that. We just continued some other pictures with that, with our parking lot party there. And then the middle picture down at the bottom is Faith Lutheran Church that does a lot of donations to the building. Far right or bottom right picture, we have, I do students that have 100% attendance every year. I raffle off four bikes if they haven't missed any school, not late, even 10 seconds. And I have a business actually out of Betsville, Carmousse Lime Company, that donates all the money for the bikes every year. But it's a, he's a, one of the workers there is a Fremont native, so that helps. Just some, you know, muffins with moms and things like that. Some of the things that you guys normally are aware of, but. And then the last piece of that is, you know, I've talked with our directors and our Superintendent Hurt of the piece that I feel like we are missing more is how can we give back to everybody that gives to us and contributes to our school? One piece is obviously is our PTO, you know, is having those students apply for a scholarship, you know, and giving money back to our students that actually attended Atkinson. And then another picture I put up there before, but yes, we're giving something to a local coffee shop and trying to give them because they provide stuff to us. But that's one of our things that we want to work on in the future is how much more we want to help the people that are helping us. You know, is getting our students and our staff to give back to them because there are so many generous people in the district. And we really want to make sure we take a hold of that. So any questions at all?
Just a comment, when you talk about the giving back, it's that intrinsic thing where when, when those kids grow up, because they've had all that involvement come to them, it may take a while, but then they're giving back to the community. And so there is, there is that payback, even though it's not a immediate gratification.
That's very true. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mrs. Parker and Fremont Middle School.
Well, hello everyone. I think it's a perfect segue and Mr. Ward and I did not plan it. But as Mrs. King said earlier, and then Mr. Ward just hinted, or tapped on, excuse me, touched on.
My son's playing a game, sorry.
Thank you.
When we have our building plan meetings, the administrators with the directors and Superintendent Hurt, one of the conversations we always have is what reciprocal partnerships are we having? And one of the things I have in my back pocket is I have a phenomenal staff of, you know, teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, paras, you name it. I have the best staff around and I actually employed them to kick back some ideas on reciprocal partnerships. There are so many things I see at the, at the, at one level, but kicking it out to them and having them come back with some ideas, I can't even tell you how many amazing things we're doing here at Fremont Middle School. So I'm going to brag on everyone for a little bit. So obviously we've gone over those three goals and we are looking at, you know, those action steps. Here at Fremont Middle School, we have 17 different clubs. Within those clubs, there's a ton of volunteering opportunities that the students take part in, specifically in our Student Council and our NJHS. That's the National Junior Honor Society where we have a chapter. I believe we signed up that charter about four years ago. It's a great precursor into the NHS at the high school. But there's tons of volunteering that they do. I had a lot of students kick back that they are in Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, that they are doing their service projects for underprivileged children in the community. All of that goes right back into the Fremont community. There are also a number of members who volunteer in a variety of local churches, which is amazing. Whether it's through VBS or in their kitchens or just doing good deeds for the parishioners of whatever church they attend. I also have my Make a Difference Club, my asset team, NJHS again. A lot of different clubs are writing letters to local Fremont veterans through the Lions Club. We had a lot of veterans acknowledged or sent letters to in the Sandusky Ohio Veterans Home. A variety of clubs also help our local assisted living homes. And I think Mrs. King said, it's, we definitely utilize the area around our campus. And we've had students go over in our eighth grade choir and sing to those residents. We've had letters written and just again, trying to give back what they already give to us. There is a picture at the bottom left, a bunch of my amazing girlies sitting in the cafeteria in the morning, giving up their time, writing letters to the veterans. We also have a partnership with the YMCA. Two years ago, they started an after-school part program just for middle schoolers. And we basically provide the children, they provide the supports. They give them a snack and recreation time and then they follow up with a tutoring time as well. So it's an awesome, it's an awesome resource to be able to hand teacher, or excuse me, hand parents at parent teacher conferences or team meetings where, you know, the parents are frustrated and don't know what to do. And it's extended childcare, which is huge. And that's free through the YMCA. Finally, this is one of my favorites, Mrs. Hurt. We have a great relationship with the Hays Presidential Center. We have not only been utilizing a ton of their resources through their educational services. Earlier this year, you'll see in the bottom right, there's a picture of one of the authors of Haunted Ohio, or Unnatural Ohio, excuse me, who came to speak to all of our eighth graders and present a bunch of different ghost stories or unnatural stories. And then he connected it to folklore and first and second, first and second, what am I looking for? And like giving your first and second.
Voice.
Voice, perfect, thank you, sorry. I totally had a brain fade there. But it was amazing because it connected to history, but then it also connected to so many different other content areas. And he was able to provide that information to our kids and they were completely engaged. It was pretty awesome. But one way, we get back to the, to the Hays Center, and this is just a shameless plug for my face. But if you look up in the top right corner, Mrs. Hurt, a few years ago, volunteered, told several of the Fremont City staff members. No, I'm kidding, we all were happy to do it. But we are, several of the families in Fremont City schools are featured in their tourism. There's Ohio Tourism Book. If you go on the Hays Presidential website, several of us can be seen. As you see there, that's my mother-in-law, father-in-law, husband and children looking longingly into that display case. But there are a variety of other family members from Fremont that are featured in their, you know, advertising paraphernalia too. So that was one of the ways we were able to give back to them. Okay. The next action step. This one, I really particularly feel near and dear to because we're, we're trying to improve district family partnerships. One of the ways I think we do that at Fremont Middle School is we have a FMS Student Supply Center. The district has a food pantry. We have something that we've just kind of done in-house that it's the same thing. We do have food pantry items. However, we also have clothes, hats, gloves, toiletries, feminine products, a variety of things that may be needed. And this year, I don't know why, but we're getting a lot more families taking part of that. I did an incentive with my staff earlier in the school year and asked them to donate. And I could not believe the giving they came forward with. We've been able to help a ton of families with a variety of, you know, needs through that Student Supply Center. We also have six active wraparound families or families working with wraparound. That's through the Sandusky County Family First Council. We also have several Community Connection coordinators through the Sandusky County Board of DD to come in to work with our students of special needs to make sure that they are taken care of when they leave FMS or that they're taking advantage of all the resources that are available within Sandusky County. That's an amazing partnership that we have. We also are working closely with the Fremont Police Department. They still provide dear education for all of our sixth grade students here at FMS. And finally, I have to give a major shout out to the amazing Susan Frye, who is our ACE mentoring guru. She has gotten us 49 ACE mentoring pairings here at Fremont Middle School. It is so phenomenal being able to see all of these awesome community members in with our kiddos. I also think it's an amazing opportunity for them to see what we're doing here within this building and go out and be our own, you know, town criers telling us that it is not the middle zoo. We are actually a really amazing educational center. It's super calm and awesome. And. I think that's it, yeah, sorry ma'am, thank you so much. I'm glad you know what I'm talking about. And finally, the third and final action step. We, as you have seen, when you come into Fremont Middle School, we have team banners. But every team is not only associated with an Ohio College, but they are also sponsored by a local Fremont business. And that is all Mr. Anway is doing. We then ask those businesses to come in and present to students. And then we are having our students write letters back, send emails and tech classes. They're also coming up with interview questions for when those business partners come in to present, to do some more obvious reciprocal conversations. But the best part of this business sponsorship that I see is I see a connection between parents and students that students are. parents and students, that students are able to see what their parents do and they're so proud. I will never forget when we had Crown Battery in, actually, yeah, it was Crown Battery last year, and this quiet student said, "My dad works there." And it was just a really cool moment to be able to connect those dots. And, you know, we do have a lot of students that are not going to go to college. It's amazing to give them the opportunity to see these different local businesses and what they offer to the community and what they offer as far as employability. We also have, on the first day of, well, yep, sorry. We also have community members that welcome students to FMS. That's on the next page, I'll show you that picture in a second. We have Lions Club, Mr. Anway, our amazing assistant principal here at Fremont Middle School, is the Lions Club president, and he has gotten us started with a Lions Club partnership for plastic recycling, and I'll show you that in a second. And someone, or an organization I definitely want to highlight is our Fremont Rotarians who have provided us grant money to do our deer program, which is Drop Everything and Read. And our students have each been provided a book in the eighth grade, seventh grade and sixth grade. It's, there's, there's a one book, one school thing that a lot of different schools do. We're doing one book, one grade, and the Rotary has been able to provide us grant dollars to buy books for each student. And that happens every Friday in the morning for 35 minutes, but it's a phenomenal partnership. And just here are some pictures, at the top left-hand corner, that's Tamara Frye from Green Bay Packaging. The right picture, top right, is a bunch of different community members, some of them may look familiar, Ms. Smith, I believe I see you right there, or Lewis, Ms. Lewis, excuse me, looking beautiful. But, and Mr. Ward, and his beautiful face up there too. But anyways, a bunch of different community members there who showed up to welcome our students to the first day of school. Bottom left-hand picture is a picture of deer in action, and the bottom right is one of our other businesses that came in to present. And finally, our last pictures, I mentioned a few seconds ago that we have worked with the Lions Club to recycle. So we have a plastic recycling program where teachers, some students will bring in Kroger bags, Walmart bags, et cetera, any plastic material. We give it to Mr. Anway, who then turns it in to the Lions, and they make these benches out of the donated plastic. So we were the first to receive one of the benches this year, and these benches are going out and around Fremont based on the recycling that Fremont Middle School is doing for this program. So those are just some of the highlights. Again, I could not do it without my amazing staff. They are constantly coming up with more and more creative ways to connect our community with our kids. They're phenomenal.
Any questions?
I could high five kids walking into school every day of the school year.
It's so fun.
It is such a rewarding experience for the grown folks who do it. I think, I've done it a couple of years now, and I think that all of us grown folks kind of huddle up afterwards and we're giddy. Like, it was so cool. So it's a neat way to, to give back to kids in the, in the district.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, board members. We will continue on, as you and our community, community did see, we have a lot going on in our district and within our buildings to highlight that relationship between homes and schools. And we share very important children in the middle, and there's a lot happening. So definitely something for all of us to keep in our thoughts as we move forward with that strategic planning piece. Mr. Price, if you're okay, I'll continue on.
Yep.
Fabulous. Thank you. Item number one, I would seek your approval for some donations that our generous community has gifted us with.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number two, I would ask for you to consider the approval of an MOU with Liski Counseling and Consulting. This is a new opportunity for the district, but it will run exactly like the other communications that we have already in place. So this allows for, from the district side, we will provide a space within our building, and Liski Counseling and Consulting will provide the opportunity for that to take place. It gets billed back through the family, and this is for pre-existing relationships that are already in place. It simply is a opportunity to make it a little bit easier for our families. They can squeak in a little bit of opportunity during the school day, and sometimes not having to have that extra transportation, that extra stop at the end of the day after school takes place, is sometimes just the little bit of extra that is needed with our families. So this very much resembles what we already have in place.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number three is that one and only policy that Mr. Price highlighted earlier, policy BDC Executive Sessions, and this would be a first reading.
Can I get a motion to approve item three, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Wonderful. Item number four, I would like to take just a moment, just to highlight a little bit and give you an opportunity, if you have some questions. I would like that you would please consider the approval of our Ross Spanish Club students to take a trip to Spain. For those of you that have been with us for the last couple of years, this group has had a few already out-of-the-country trips. We've done Costa Rica. This would be a little bit different. This will come in the summer of 2026, so after-school year is out, and there's no cost to the district. This will be completely funded by the students that will be participating. Mrs. Ward has prepared for us, but in lieu of, we already had a lot of presentation time this evening, I've shared with you at your seats, you can see the ongoing adventures that our students will be participating in, and some of the cities that they will have. And Mrs. Ward is in attendance this evening. If you do have any specific questions, she is prepared and very happy to answer those.
Not to put you on the spot or anything, but there were some of us who weren't on the board last year to hear, like, the impact the trip to Costa Rica had on the students. So if it's not too big of an ask, maybe just share, share some of those experiences and your experience with them.
Mrs. Ward, if you're comfortable, would you please come to the podium so that our viewers at home will be able to hear you answer that question?
Thank you.
Share from our Costa Rica trip?
Or, or any trip, but I was only, I was privy to that one.
What does this mean for our students, there's a trip such as this?
I mean, it's, I'm kind of, I feel like, like, I'm kind of a door for them to be able to get out in the world. I mean, it's obviously a global opportunity, and it's expensive, and we've had, you know, even kids pay for it completely themselves financially and be responsible. But to go to Europe and have like the agenda planned, and there would be visiting, seeing architecture that we would never see here in the United States, and it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't just be for kids in Spanish class. You know, last time we had a couple of students that were in French class, we had a student that wasn't in any, any world language class, but wanted the opportunity to travel, and, and it's, it's a safe way. You know, we're in a group, and, I mean, I think of any kid that wants to become an architect, this would be an absolute amazing experience, and, I don't know, I just, I had the experience growing up, I went to, I went to Spain. This trip's a little different because it adds in Barcelona, which is a beautiful city, and, and so I just, I, I mean, they would be visiting art museums, castles, palaces, just seeing how the culture is so different, and it's, it's definitely something you can't replace, you know? I, I say a passport is worth way more than a whole bunch of items in your house and, you know, a full passport, so.
I just remember the students coming back and talking about their experience and culture, like you talked about.
Speaking the language.
Speaking the language from the minute they get, you know, off the plane and settled, and that was the, that was the agreement.
Right.
And just, just being exposed to so many different experiences that aren't, it's not like they're going to another state, you know, a whole other country, and just hearing them and their experience made, made me excited for them.
And, you know, some of the students had never traveled in a plane before, you know, so that was even, I was holding one girl's hand, you know, and, and the way home, she was just fine, so, you know, so.
Fantastic. And this approval board policy does dictate that because this is an overnight trip and it would be out of sight of the district, obviously, it does need your approval. And also, students are unable to begin that fundraising that will be necessary for this until it is, the trip is board-approved. So that is why we bring this to you well in advance of June of 26, so that our students have ample opportunity to be a part of such an amazing, amazing trip.
And I know too, from previous trips, hearing about it here on the board, the organizational part of it is amazing. I mean, Mrs. Ward, you do a great job of putting it all together. If, if I had a child that was thinking of going, I would definitely go, because it's, I mean, there's always little things along the way, but man, overall, it sounds like everything just is so organized and well-planned out and ready to go, and the kids are in great hands. I mean, I would have full confidence in sending my kid, that's for sure. So if anybody is thinking of that as a parent, don't be afraid.
I'm the last one to go to bed, and the first one to go. So I, it'll be nice having summer after.
Not right back to school.
Right. Yeah, we were back in school the next day.
Fabulous. Thank you, Mrs. Ward, I appreciate your efforts and your words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to approve item four, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
I'm excited for all you guys. I think it's awesome.
Need to come back and tell us about it again.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Wonderful, thank you very much, board. Item number five.
You know, maybe we should change our board meeting that month, maybe we could hop on the plane with the.
Back in our bags.
You know, take the show on the road in Barcelona for a board meeting. Mrs. Hurt? Megan, can you make that happen?
We can do that.
If you fundraise appropriately for yourselves.
Leave it to the treasurer.
Keeping it real.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Moving us along, item number five, I would ask that you consider the approval for the adoption and purchase of Amplify, Amplify CKLA for our K5 ELA curriculum. I did forward Mrs. Abernathy's memo to you, to give you some, all of that background information. I know that this is a very large purchase that we will be utilizing. Please remember that this is for all of our kindergarten through fifth grade students in all four buildings. And as we have done previously, whenever we are adopting a material, all of those materials, well, sampling of those materials, because there's a lot of pieces and parts to CKLA, are here with us this evening, as well as all of the paperwork that has been completed by our committee. We've had over 30, approximately 30 teachers and staff members that have participated in this committee. It has been a lengthy process, and all of those materials will then be at the district office beginning tomorrow, if, if the community members would like to preview those as well. And Mrs. Abernathy is here this evening, if you have any specific questions for her.
I, I don't have a question, just a comment, I'm just very impressed with the whole process that you guys have gone through, and like you said, the number of people involved, and I think it's a very positive thing for our district to move forward with this program.
One question, how often, like, when it comes to curriculum at any grade level, and I know with everything, it changes, you know, when you look at technology, it's out of date three months later or something, but like, when we change a full curriculum like this, what's the, like, what's our use out of that usually before it just becomes dated enough where it's just not working anymore?
Approximately five years.
Okay.
So this, this adoption is for five years, the cost is for five years for all the materials.
Okay.
We review about every five years, doesn't mean we purchase, but we do review.
Okay. And that's probably kind of the same across the board at whatever grade of high school science, or middle school math, or whatever, so.
We have a district textbook review and adoption cycle that is re-looked at every year, and we add that next column, and we look at what those materials are, what, who's coming up, who's not been looked at for a couple of years, and we aim for that five-year cycle so that we stay current, and we have adequate materials for our students, and we can provide that quality instruction. Sometimes it's those technology components that we might lose, maybe we lose the online access, but we still have the textbook itself. Sometimes some of the bells and whistles or perks turn off within that, that duration, so we do try to look at those things. But to Mrs. Abernathy's point too, we, we review first, and that's part of our process that's built into our curriculum management plan, that we take a look at what are the standards that we are held to teach in that content area at that grade level, and do our current materials still align? Does it click all of the boxes? And if it's working and it's still aligns, and then do we need to purchase new? Or is what we have adequate? And then again, that's part of that process with the, the staff that's in the trenches using the materials, and they do a lot of paperwork and spend a lot of time and bring us to this point here, so.
Thank you.
And I had a chance to sit down with Abby, because since I was added to the committee, I was, obviously needed to fill in on a lot of things going on, and what was happening, and, you know, even the point that you brought up to me, Abby, about how, I think we're looking at the geology, geography, we're looking at those books and how they cross, you weren't just learning all that, you were, you're learning your spelling, your different things. It's, it's totally different the way that they put books together and the materials rather than the days when we were in school, because it's, you're seeing it from many different aspects out of one book. And I thought that was, out of everything that I learned that day, I think that was what I took away with the most of learning, out of all the stuff that you had. So I think, I mean, you, you have to get it, you have to move on, you have to be up to par with everything, so seems like a good company over there, good materials. And thank you for taking that time and explaining everything to me.
All right, can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you, board members. Item number six, I would ask that you consider the approval of the following resignations. Mindy Villa will be leaving us, and Pamela Crawford will be retiring from us in the end of the school year, after 23 years in the district.
Wow.
Item number seven, we have some appointments as well. Sarah Watson has completed everything she needs as an intervention specialist. We have a couple of subs, both support staff subs and certified staff subs. Item number eight, I would ask for your approval of Jared Atkins as a volunteer middle school basketball coach. Item number eight, I would ask for your approval of Jared Atkins as a volunteer middle school basketball coach. Item number nine, we have some special event workers, beginning with Joe Hershey and ending with Chad Burnt. And please know that, note there that Mr. Burnt will only be assigned, only will be paid for events that are non-Fremont City School events. And then item number 10, Mandy Miller, our EMIS coordinator, is requesting permission to attend a conference this spring.
Can I get a motion to approve items six through 10, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. All right, moving on to report of the treasurer.
Evening. We had a very eventful last week on our two days that we were in. We got all of the district W2s printed and then passed out to the different buildings for our regular staff. And that substitutes, coaches, any supplemental position workers that don't work on a day-to-day basis in the schools, those got mailed out today. But the rest of them were distributed to the buildings, I think it was on Friday. So I got to go around and visit all the school secretaries and they just love seeing my face with W2s because they get to put them in all the staff mailboxes. And then come Thursday, if they're, if they have not been picked up, we will then proceed to mail them out. So we will make the deadline of January 31st on those 1099s were also mailed out as well. And then this coming week, I do have a meeting with our state, one of our state auditors to go over some of our audit sections. And I can't believe it's already going to be the end of January this month. So with that, I will move into our December financials. And just a couple of things to highlight for the year. Again, I've said this, I think, since the beginning of the year. The, when you look at the real estate taxes and see that it's down for this year, that's just the difference of separating out tangible personal property from the real estate taxes this year versus prior years, we had lumped it all together. But with the pipeline money that we are expecting to see, we just wanted to separate those lines out now, so that we can see that pipeline money a little better. So that's why those first two lines in this report, there's really only a small increase. There's not really that millions of dollars difference in each line. And like Mr. Nally had said, the budget is going to be the big discussion coming up this year. And the new House Speaker has had some negative things about fair school funding, but due to a lot of people saying, people's voice is being heard by their legislators, he has come back on that. So, so it's good to say that that fair school funding plan might not be as unsustainable as some of the legislators initially believed. And then on the, on the expense side, of course salary and wages and benefits are up a little bit this year. Again, just as a reminder, that part of that is due to moving those federal, those expenses from our, us or grant that we had finished up at the end of last fiscal year to this year is being paid out of general fund. So the uptick is kind of due to that more so than in large increase in wages or benefits. And I would, was very happy to see that some of our expense lines are down from last year. And that's with inflation, I wasn't expecting to see any expenses really down, especially in our supplies line. But that's, has to do with not making as many larger purchases as we had last year. And just a general reminder, December is for our cash flow, our lower month. That's before we get real estate tax advances, which we just got in January. So our cash looks a little bit leaner come the end of December, but January that we get some of those larger real estate tax collections and it'll kick that balance back up a little bit.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Then can I get a motion to approve item 11, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
And Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. All right, moving on to board member communications. Start with Sarah tonight.
January, even though it is coming to an end, is National Mentoring Month. We heard Mrs. Parker talked about the ACE mentoring program. And there's lots of data to support that mentoring matters and mentoring has a positive impact on our students. So if you feel like you would be a good mentor, I would suggest that you, you know, contact the district to be set in the right direction to, to sign up. And we would love to have all kinds of different people from all different kinds of walks of life be able to support our students in that, in that way. The high school music program participated in a solo and ensemble contest on Saturday at Genoa High School. I don't have everybody's results yet, so I want to wait until next board meeting. But we had a really good showing, lots of kids earning top honors at that event. We're really proud of them. Mrs. King, I'm glad to hear you say, like when you hear feedback about anything as simple as our website and our application process, that we take that information and make it dynamic, not just static. Like, oh, thanks for the show and don't do anything about it. We need people to apply. And if our, if people that apply give feedback that it's tedious and torturous at some level and it's not working, well, it's to our advantage to fix that. So thank you for, and, and all parties involved for listening to feedback, even though it's hard, like you said, sometimes, but listening to that feedback and, and making changes. And I guess community seems to be something, I know I hear, like, everybody tonight talk about, like the thing they want to improve on is how can we give back to our community? And I just think what a, what a neat problem to have, that we have so much community support. And we want to figure out how we can give back to the community. I am thankful to the people and businesses and agencies of our community and how, I am so sorry, they support our district and our, and our students. So I know moving forward, we're going to look at the strategic plan. It would sound like community might be a piece that we keep. Not a directive, just a suggestion. Because it seems to be not only very important to all of us up here, but to the, to the boots on the ground. And it sounds like if I hear what I say, they have unfinished business that they'd like to accomplish. And we want to make sure that we can, as a district, support that. So, and, and if there are any like events going on that we as board members could attend or participate in at some level, I, I mean, I speak for myself, but I know I'm speaking for everybody. Even if we can't attend, just to be aware of things that are going on at the, the local buildings, I would appreciate like knowing, because I'm definitely going to the parking lot party. It's a no brainer.
Food truck.
Say less. But it was wonderful to hear all the things that we're doing, you know, outside of the classroom that impact the classroom. And just wonderful information and thank, thank everybody.
Lori?
All over the board. Thank little Apollo for coming in, doing the pledge. He did a good job. He did really good. All the donations, Mrs. King, Ms. Parker, Ms. Ward, for your presentation. That was very, I mean, it's awesome to see the things that you guys are doing and things that are happening. I didn't even know about that parking lot party and I just live at the other end of Pennsylvania. And it's, and I didn't even know that was going on down that other end. So like Sarah said, I think I'm going to show up. I'll bring my grandson. He'll like it. And that trip to Spain, I'm excited to hear about it when they come back. Because when they came back last year, it was so, all the stories they had and the humor and the funny stuff that happened and things they did, it just, it's a great experience for them. So for them to be able to do that is awesome. That's it.
Good. Don?
Kind of going off a few of the things Sarah had mentioned. When you talk about community being one of those key pieces, I think it rolls into what I was going to mention about the, the new newsletter that was shared. And the part that Mrs. Hurt talked most, mostly about was communication. And so I, you know, I think those are really two critical pieces in looking at, like, like you said, the strategic plan and the things that are going on in the district. So communication was one of the, the key things I picked up. The other thing is with the newsletter, the activities that are going on, you know, the presentations we had tonight about what, what they're doing on a daily basis is just phenomenal. And the other thing that I really liked was the emphasis that you all put on your staff and talking about, you know, the, the teachers and I, I, I'm just overly impressed with, you know, with that type of attitude and involvement with our, our various staff members. And then another thing that you had mentioned was the application process. Doing that is, that's just amazing because it, you know, if somebody has to fill out a long, long form and they're just applying for, you know, maybe a custodial job or something that doesn't need that, you know, all the education pieces and stuff and questions. You know, I think that, that's just great to be able to increase people applying for different jobs. And I think, I think that's all I had.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you, ladies, for everything you brought to the table tonight. Greatly appreciated. And yeah, I mean, all this, all the community events, stuff you're talking about, my mind goes to, they've touched on it too, all the teachers, the staff, everything that goes behind to get those events together, you guys know how long it takes. You know, the work that goes behind it, the months, down to the particulars. The event comes and you see it all unfold in front of your eyes, but what did you do to get it there? You know, and it takes a slew of people, more than we could probably even realize right now. So I mean, thank you to everybody that works on all of that. I know how much hard work goes in all that and it's greatly appreciated, especially for the kids and just for everybody that goes and enjoy it. I just want to do a shout out to the fifth graders of Otis. I was looking on Facebook, that's like the place where I keep up with a lot of things that the kids do. And they worked on this, it was, it was a solar system project. They had that thing, well, I can't even say thing, they all did their own individuals. 3Ds, and I mean, just sticking everywhere, colorful. And I can tell that they put a lot of work and time into those suckers and they looked good. The one board had like LED lights that looked like if you're looking up to the thing, it was this, you know, the sky, it was the stars and all that with the planets. And I thought, man, these kids really wanted some detail with this. So I just want to give a shout out to the fifth graders of Otis, man, you guys really, you did a good job on that project and it caught my eye. And if I would have known, I would have loved to have been in the middle of when you guys were making those, but that's all right. You guys take your time and do what you want to do and you did a great job.
Okay. Thanks to Sue and Erin and Chris for coming in and talking about different things that are happening around in the district. Like everybody else has said, I think it's a great thing where we can help be a part of teaching our kids to give back to the community. So it just kind of becomes part of their DNA. So like Don said earlier, as you get older and you're going through life, you just tend to always want to do that. Instead of just, you can't just take and take and take, you got to give to, to make a community work. So that's great. Thank you to Apollo for coming in, for doing our pledge. That's going to be one of my new favorite things at the board meetings, instead of looking at all these ugly mugs up here with me. At least we have a student coming in and providing the pledge of allegiance. So it's just fun to, to get to meet the students there. So I did want to give a little public thank you to, it was a week ago Saturday, we had our big ladies wrestling tournament. To all the parents, the kids, the students, the staff, the community members that came in and helped and volunteered to do that, to put that on for the amount of wrestlers that we had, it was a great day. To our custodial staff at the high school, to the maintenance, because we had an issue with the bathroom. It wasn't anything that was wrong. It was self-inflicted by someone who decided to do some property damage, but maintenance was in, was able to fix it right away. They came right in and, and did a great job for there. So I just wanted to say thanks to everybody who helped put that on and take care of it throughout the day. It was a, it was a big event and it went well and the girls loved it. So just thank you to them. So. With that, there's no need for executive session tonight. So could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Meeting is adjourned.